This conference will now be recorded.
By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshohocken Borough Council duly rect, open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Steph, if you'll do your roll call.
Councilmember Tatinho. Karen, are you on?
Yes. Sorry about that, present.
Councilmember Griffin.
Here.
Councilmember Flanagan. Jane, are you on? Okay, she might be jumping on. Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Stokely.
Here.
Vice President Sokolowski.
Here.
President Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Aronson.
Jane is on.
I see Jane. Jane, you're on. Mayor Yaniv, did you jump on? There you are. I see you. I can't hear you, though. Okay.
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 Vice President Sokolowski, if you could do a prayer for council.
Sure. Oh divine master, in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word, and deed so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people that we represent. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled public voting session via video conference under conference call. At this time, I would ask that all participants mute their audio lines. No public comment will be permitted during the course of the meeting until the designated public comments section located on the agenda. You will be notified during the meeting when public comments are permitted. You may also submit written comments via email to brogers@conshohockenpa.gov. A member of the borough administration during the public comment period will read public comments submitted in this manner. For all comments, please include your name and address for the record. It is of the utmost importance that the public is given every available opportunity to participate in the meeting. However, if required, we will mute all audio lines due to any inappropriate comments or behavior during the remote meeting. For our council and administration, thank you in advance for your cooperation during the remote meeting. We hope that everyone in our community is staying safe and healthy. Prior to the public meeting, council did have an executive session on personnel and legal matters. The first item on our agenda is land use matters, public hearings, and ordinances. The first item is considering a grant waiver of off-street parking for 319 Forest Street. Ms. Checo.
Yes, so the applicant was in front of you at your work session regarding the waiver of off-street parking request for 319 Forest Street. It is a retrofit custom van business on the first floor garage. There's no off-street parking and no ability to add off-street parking to the site. I believe that the applicant, Mr. Gravenese, represented the business well at the work session, and there were not many issues. There was one question from a resident, and it was answered, and she was satisfied with that question. So for tonight, if you're inclined, it would be a motion to grant a waiver of off-street parking for 319 Forest Street.
I'll make that motion.
A second. Ike.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda under presentations is conducting interviews for borough boards, commissions, and commission vacancies. The first person for interview is Morgan Sheridan for the zoning hearing board application. Good evening, Morgan.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Thank you for your interest in the zoning board.
Absolutely.
Okay. So Morgan, why would you like to serve on the zoning board?
Well, overall, it interests me. So my background is that I'm a real estate agent. I've been doing it for about six years. And my dad is a small developer, so I've always kind of had a background and interest in development. So that's kind of where it stems from. And I actually am in the process of renovating a home in Conshohocken that I'll be living in. So I love the borough, the area. I'm really excited about that. So it's kind of a nice little merge of both of those.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a question for Morgan?
Morgan, what do you think the role of the zoning hearing board is? And how will you go about learning how to apply that role in the best to your ability?
So my understanding of the role is to hear cases on mostly variances and special exceptions, which I know there's a lot of construction and work going on in the borough. So the role is to uphold, obviously, the code or hear the variances and special exceptions and make sure that people are not taking advantage or trying to do more than what the borough should be allowing. And also, in addition, I personally love the small-town feel of Conshohocken, so I know that's like a big part of it as well.
Thank you. Are there any particular issues that you believe need to be addressed by the zoning hearing board?
No, honestly, no, not that I can think of.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? Go ahead, Jane.
Thank you, Colleen. Morgan, have you ever served or volunteered in any capacity in the community you currently live in?
I have not, no. I currently live in Abington Township, and I have not.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on council? Okay. Well, Morgan, thank you for your interest, and thank you for joining us this evening. We truly appreciate your interest, and you'll be hearing from us soon. Okay?
Yeah, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Bye.
Bye. The next person to be interviewed is Daniel Swartley-McCardle for the planning commission. Daniel, are you here?
I am indeed. Yes, hello.
Good evening. Thank you for your.
Good evening.
Interest in the planning commission.
So.
What do you believe the role is, your role would be on the planning commission?
So, planning commission. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm eager and apparently a little rude. Apologies. So as I understand it, the role of the planning commission is to review applicants for kind of whatever. Essentially, it's the idea of development within the jurisdiction of the borough. I could be wrong on that, but that's kind of my understanding, is to review and make recommendations on what we would like the feel of the town to continue to be and also kind of how to get it there. Planning commission is a little more broad spectrum and a lot more longer term, I think, than maybe the zoning board is, because zoning board kind of looks into what's happening day-to-day and how to actually kind of work that in, maybe a much shorter time horizon, whereas the planning commission has a much longer commitment to look at.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. Do you have any knowledge of plans at all?
Absolutely. So I currently am a project planner for Merck. I had been with a different company up until fairly recently, so literally October 26th was my first day for Merck. But prior to this, I had been working in project management, project planning for, as a contractor for Merck for a couple of different companies, right? It's kind of one of those things. But for the past couple of years. So I'm a microbiologist by training, but I've been very much within project management, project planning for the last, I don't know, four or five years now. First, I was at GSK, and then I found my way into Merck. So it's kind of been like my job. But then also, as a personal interest, I got involved with two other organizations that were very much within the idea of the public scope and the public participation for planning commission. So specifically with it for planning, I am the, I was a former vice chair and then former chair for the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, DVRPC. Lots of the stuff in and around both here in southeastern PA, but also over in New Jersey. So I was the former chair of the Public Participation Task Force. That was kind of very much just understanding kind of the public's role. How do we actually want to do? What do we want to see? And then how to make presentations and also recommendations to the DVRPC staff and board to move forward for that time horizon. And then I am the immediate past chair. So I literally, my term ended like a week ago. But I was the, again, former vice chair and then chair for the Delaware River Port Authority for their Citizens Advisory Committee. So how to actually manage and plan for managing of the bridges into and out of Philadelphia and also the PATCO. So, yeah, I have a little more time now that I'm no longer the chair, right? So I was like, well, I'm here. I'm physically living here, and I figured, why not?
Yeah, I'm very familiar with DVRPC.
It's a great organization. It really is.
Absolutely is.
Well, I think you answered my question. Why here, why now? So you found yourself some extra time.
I did, like, you know, an extra 10 hours a week, right? That's, it's gonna be huge for me. I'm, 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 I don't know what to do with myself. It's been a, it was two years, two terms, rather, as vice chair, then two years as chair. So I have some time.
What motivated you to get in, to volunteer in that sector?
Honestly, the access, the idea of access for health. So I'm in pharma, so health and health access and like health affordability is kind of like a big thing for me. So how do we actually keep costs under control enough so that people of all broad spectrums can use the services for the access to health? So health and healthcare access has always been like a big hallmark of mine, and it's the thing that I really enjoy and also the thing that I kind of like key in on. So that's the thing I think I could potentially bring if you decide to seat me on the planning commission, but also the thing that I would be most interested in.
Thank you.
Anyone else on council have questions for Daniel? Well, Daniel, thank you so much for your interest. We truly appreciate it and your enthusiasm. We also truly appreciate. And we will be in touch. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you much.
You're welcome. The next item is conducting interviews for boards and commissions reappointments. Mr. Eckert cannot make it this evening. We will do him on a different evening. The next person we're going to interview is Marissa Buck, the Chair of the Dog Park Advisory Committee. Good evening, Marissa.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Nice to see everyone again.
Yes, it's crazy, isn't it?
It is. It is.
So I would ask you why you want to do it, but I'm sure that we are all very well aware of why you would like to continue what you do on the Dog Park Committee, which we all truly appreciate. Is there anyone that has any questions for Marissa?
Marissa, can you maybe take, you know, council and any residents listening through some of your accomplishments over the past few years as chair?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Aronson. You know, we've come quite a long way. I know Mackenzie and Georgie are on the call as well, and it's really pretty amazing what we've done over the past several years. And with the support of Ms. Checo and council, it's just been unbelievable what we've been able to accomplish. I think the biggest thing that we've done is really getting those lights installed. Not only has it brought safety to the dog park, but even that pathway behind the park along the river, not just community members with dogs, but those that are just using the trail system are able to benefit from that. So it's been a really great accomplishment. We've resurfaced the dog park several times, and we've made it ADA compliant. There's several other things we have in the works. You know, Georgie's designed shirts. Mackenzie's made this amazing survey for our members, and it's really just been a really great group effort. We continue to make the community aware of the Dog Park Advisory Committee, of the dog park itself, the things that council, it really holds true to what is important in the community, all their members, including their pets, which are part of their families. So we've done quite a lot, and we hope to continue doing that, which is really, you know, why I want to keep going. We've done a lot, but we're not, we're not done yet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. Anyone else?
Well, I would just like to say job well done. I appreciate everything that you and the entire committee has been doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Marissa. Thank you for being with us this evening and for all of your hard work and enthusiasm for the Dog Park. We all do truly appreciate it.
Absolutely. Hope to see you all in person soon. Stay well.
Absolutely. Thank you. The next person is Mackenzie Brolinger for the Dog Park Committee, Vice Chair. Good evening, Mackenzie.
Good evening. How's everyone doing?
We're good. How about you?
Doing good. Excited to be here and see everyone virtually.
Yes. So how about if you just maybe go over some of your goals for the future with the Dog Park Committee?
Sure. So as Marissa mentioned, I did do a survey of Dog Park members, and that's something that will be a goal of mine going forward, is to survey our members at least on a yearly basis to see, you know, what's top of mind for them, what's working well for them in the park, what isn't, and what opportunities are there for them. One thing that came out of this year's survey is the need for water feature within the park. So that would be one of my top-of-mind goals, as well as just continuing to educate members and the community that the Dog Park exists and the different resources that are available to members of the community as well as their dogs. So really just focusing on our current Dog Park members and also trying to grow some new ones through fundraising and different awareness events as well.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Mackenzie?
I don't have any questions. I would just say the same thing that I said to Marissa. Thank you very much, Mackenzie. I appreciate what you do.
Thank you. It's been a lot of fun, so definitely want to continue.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Thank you for coming in this evening.
Of course.
Appreciate it. And again, for all your hard work and enthusiasm. Truly appreciate it by all of us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next person is Georgina Weber for the Dog Park Advisory Committee.
Hi. Sorry, I'm muted.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm well. I'm well.
Good. So Georgina, what are your goals for the Dog Park Committee for the future?
So I would say like future goals. We had, we did an education session with roundtables. We probably can do this year, probably be more of like a Zoom roundtable meeting, but that was really beneficial. We kind of heard back from the community directly of how they felt about the Dog Park. Oh, that was my watch. Felt about the Dog Park and what they wanted and needed. So that was really nice. I would say future goals. I volunteered at a rescue at Main Line for a while, and I would say like future maybe would be TVing up with some other rescues locally and seeing if there's anything we can do to partner with the Dog Park and spreading more awareness about it.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Well, Georgina, thank you. And we also do again, thank you for all your hard work and your enthusiasm, again, as everyone on the Dog Park Committee does have in dedication, and it's something that everyone at council does appreciate it. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and we'll talk to you soon.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Have a nice night. So the next person is Timothy Beckel for a reappointment for the EAC. Tim, are you here?
I'm here. Good evening, everyone. Great to see you.
Good evening. Good to see you. So you're re-interviewing again for continuing on the EAC. So, Tim, what do you see as the role of the EAC?
So I've said this a few times. You may have heard me say it. I think we're a great group of environmental doers. We have unfortunately not so much this year for obvious reasons, but we have a great slate of environmentally focused community events in a community that has a lot of great community events. So, you know, from our cleanups twice a year, to plantings, our workshops that we have at, we've had at the elementary school, at the library, and more recently, we worked with the borough in doing a Spotted Lantern Fly virtual workshop. So that's a really, really big part of what we do. And that's in no small part, because we have a great environmentally focused community around us. We have a great group of supporters in our Friends of Green Conchi that make sure that all these events are the best they can be. Of course, there is, in the name, there's the advisory part, and I think we try to do that from time to time. When, thinking back prior to the pandemic, back in 2019, you all did frankly a really great thing in passing the Ready for 100 initiative, committing the borough, our community, to 100% clean and renewable energy. And so we look to do that from time to time and work collaboratively. One of the things that's important in my mind is that we want to bring, we want to be environmentally focused, but also bring practical benefits to the community, whether that's community education or, you know, the cleanups. We're taking litter off the streets, out of our storm drains, out of our streams, the tree plantings, you know, additional tree cover, energy savings, additional shade, that sort of thing. So I, my personal focus has always been, you know, how can we engage the community and, you know, bring practical benefits and just, you know, have a great, great community events? I know that was long-winded, so sorry.
It's okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Tim?
I do, Tim. Hi, it's Jane. My question, you seem like you're focusing on education, which is near and dear to my heart. Facing COVID, can you think of strategies you can use to keep your programs going? I know the virtual is one way, but I was curious, you know, how you see the EAC evolving over the next six months into next spring even?
So we hope to do more of those virtual workshops. The Spotted Lantern Fly is not going away, unfortunately, so I'm almost positive we will continue to do those. We also were able to do, and thank you for your support with this, we were able to do a contactless cleanup where we delivered the materials to individuals cleaning up their streets with their own households. So I think the other thing would be to look at ways to mimic that. Maybe it would be a cleanup, but some of our other events, I think that's one of the things we'd like to look at, look at going into 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, does anyone else have any questions for Tim?
No, I am just going to comment on Tim as well. Tim, it would be a real disappointment if you weren't part of the EAC. You bring so much to it. There's, you have a genuine concern. You're dedicated. I really appreciate you're down and in it, the thick of it, and sometimes wearing a costume, I think. Did you wear that?
But that is right. Thanks. I am sprout. I'm the man behind the mask, so thank you very, that's really nice of you to say. Thanks.
Yeah, and your whole spirit enthusiasm is wonderful. So thank you. Thank you very much.
I have a quick question. Regarding the lantern flies, have you ever heard of using mineral oil for their egg hatches?
No. So I am not, oh, I am more of an expert than I was a year ago, but I am by no means an expert. What we have typically been recommending is that you go to the Penn State Extension and they're recommended solutions, for lack of a better term, that we don't, there's no, we're not wanting to encourage folks to use the home remedies, because there's other deleterious effects. That's my understanding. That's my broadly speaking, that's my understanding. So that was a specific question, you know, for some other home remedies in our latest, our last workshop in August, and that's, that's what we continue to let folks know. I know it's not always a satisfying answer, but that's what the experts are recommending at this time.
Okay, thank you.
And, Tim, if I'm not mistaken, all of the classes that have been run on the Lantern Fly have been in partnership with the Penn State Extension.
That's right.
Tim, thank you for taking your time this evening to come back and chat with us again. We all do appreciate everything that you've done with the EAC over the past few years and just appreciate all the EAC. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There are two items this evening on the consent agenda. The first is approve and adopt the October 7th and October 21st regular meeting minutes. The second is approve the October ending Treasuries Report and accounts payable. The first motion I would be asking for is to approve and adopt the October 7th and 21st regular meeting minutes.
Sokolowski, make that motion.
Ike Griffin.
I'll second it.
And that was Ike seconding it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The second motion would be to approve the October ending Treasuries Report and accounts payable in the amount of $367,579.42.
I'll make that motion, Ike.
I'll second. Anita?
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is unfinished business. Consider approving fiscal year 2021 proposed budget and advertise the same as duly required. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion. Flanagan? Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is consider authorizing advertisement of ordinance 02-2020 to levy real estate tax for 2021. Anyone who finds a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Do I have a second?
Ike, I'll second it.
Thank you, Ike. All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. The last item on unfinished business is consider approving fire stipend distributions for fiscal year 2020. Mr. Sokolowski, if you're here, if you could give us a list of everyone qualifying for that this evening? that this evening?
I don't have the names on the list. I know that there's 22 people that are on that list. We were going to do a presentation, I think, at the next council meeting and acknowledge them. Oh, I'm sorry. I do, miraculously, I got a list, so.
There you go.
I will, let me read off the names of the people. Justin Coogan, Dan Costello, John Costello, Leo Costello, Robert Gary Davis, Kristen Davis, Chris Dixon, John Dros, Ed Dunn, Drew Iverson, Gus Kempf, Dave Murphy, Calvin Pearlman, Tom Sesko, Taylor Verbeckus, Mike Yingling, Ron Giadizelli, George Dietzel, Bob Phipps, Chris Boyton, Carol Davis, Clinton Wakefield, and Ray Tachnon. The, the thing that's very impressive about this is this was based on 100 points system. We have numerous people on this list that had over 400 points, and we have several people that had over 600 points. Some of the people in this group got their 100 points within the first two months of this program. So, I would say it's highly successful, and I appreciate the fact that council has supported it, and I will have more information on this at the next council.
Thank you, Ray, and we truly appreciate everyone who participated this year in the stipend program, making it such a huge success. So, for this evening, I would ask for a motion to approve fire stipend distribution for fiscal year 2020.
I'll make that motion. Ike Griffin.
Do I have a second?
I'll second if I'll stoke.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So, under new business, I believe, Mr. Peters, we have an addition to our agenda this evening. If you could take that?
Yes, President Leonard, a quick addition. As council is aware, Borough Administration and my office continuously review your ordinances to determine whether or not there are any changes that are needed. There has been a change identified to your zoning ordinance, both as a matter of administration and emergency management. The recommendation is to consider removing your residential overlay section of your ordinance, which relates to the LI district. It wouldn't be appropriate this evening to go into great detail as to why that's being recommended, but there will be a hearing on this matter where it will be described in greater detail. It also needs to go before the Planning Commission. So, this evening, the recommendation from Administration is to authorize us to move forward with the process, which includes advertisement and also taking this to the Planning Commission of again, removing the residential overlay section of your zoning ordinance. So, tonight, the only motion would be to authorize advertisement and the taking of this to the Planning Commission.
I'll make that motion. You know?
And do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Ike.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public comments. Brittany, do we have any submitted comments?
No, we did not receive any written comments.
Okay. And do we have anyone from the public on the phone for comments?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, I'm sorry. Could you state your name and address for the record?
My name's Jessica Ram. I'm at 138 Sutcliffe Lane.
Thank you, Jessica.
And I just wanted to hop on here for this meeting for the month of November because I just wanted to remind you guys that this, this month marks one year since, you know, the contract with Covanta was renewed for two years. And so, I'm thinking that also means that in the next year, you guys will hopefully be gathering bids, you know, to renew the contract again possibly, or go with someone else. So, I just wanted to keep you guys updated on what Covanta has been up to since a year ago, when we were all gathered multiple times to discuss their malfunctions, and then also their response to the malfunctions. So, actually, during the meeting last year in November, we noticed that there was a lot of, there was a lot of activity coming from the stack at Covanta, and that's because they were conducting their annual stack test. And, you know, I was able to get a file review request in before the pandemic hit, but during the stack test, usually a stack test occurs every year, and before you conduct a stack test, you submit a protocol to the DEP, which is a document stating how you're going to perform the stack test. Then the DEP, once the DEP approves the protocol, that's when you go ahead and conduct the test you just stated you would. Covanta actually sent in a protocol in sometime in August, and DEP did not have time to review it before Covanta said, we need to schedule a stack test. And then DEP said, well, you don't have approval yet. We haven't reviewed it. Please call our office to coordinate, you know, what to do. Instead of calling the DEP to coordinate what they should do, Covanta instead emailed them and said, we're stack testing on this day. Show up if you want to be there. So, that's just to show you how much coordination they have going on for them in the Environmental Compliance Department. But also, since that day, there have been at least four notice violations issued to Covanta in the past year alone. And as you remember from last year, they already had the most violations of any municipal waste incinerator. So, November 12th, they had a continuous emission monitoring system, source monitoring report review, had a violation noted for that. On December 15th, there was violation noted following an inspection from a complaint that they received. On January 6th, they had another violation noted for the continuous monitor report. On May 6th, they had another violation noted for the continuous monitor report. On June 15th, I don't know if you guys remember, I think there was a lot of, a lot of reports from the community on that day because they had a malfunction and there were smells reported. They received the violation that day. On July 31st, another violation noted for the continuous monitor report. And then on October 1st, they have a violation noted for the administrative file review. I'm not sure if that's the same one I'm talking about, but I do know that they did most recently get a violation from a test they were performing. And just to give you detail, I don't know if you guys know, but one of the reasons that they keep having malfunctions is because every time they lose power, they lose the ability to control the air pollution coming from their facility. So, following all the violations and the commotion last year, they were supposed to come up with backup power supply so that they could continue to run the air pollution controls, even if their facility was down. When I, I talked to them last week, actually, and they still, they still have a backup power supply. Instead, they are trying to use a fire suppressant foam to smother the flame, to smother the burning pit if they lose power. This is not a method that any other, any other waste burning facility uses. It's not a proven method. No scientific studies say that it does control the pollution. And not to mention that the power were to go out and they were to use this foam, there's, you would still be losing your air pollution controls, which need power to work. So, the approach that they're taking, it really just seems like a grab, you know, for, for something other than actually supplying power to the air pollution control equipment. So, here we are a year later with still, we're still in no better position than we were last year, except they did put some quiet vents on the side of their building, so now maybe, you know, the malfunctions will be quieter. And part of their discussion with the DEP to use this foam is to conduct tests at their facility. When I asked the DEP if they were conducting tests, were they turning, you know, were they simulating a real-time event? And they basically are not because they can't, they're not allowed to turn off their air pollution control equipment during these tests. Nevertheless, two of the tests that they've been, that they have conducted recently have not gone well. A test that they did on September 22nd resulted in a notice of violation because later that day, there were reports from the community about the reports. And then she also informed me that a test they conducted two weeks ago actually resulted in visible emissions inside the building, so that didn't go well either. If you, like, as I mentioned, this foam is not a tried and true, you know, tried and tested method used in the, in the industry. So, I'm not sure why they're messing around with it. I would, you know, still prefer that they actually put money into upgrading their facility, the backup power supply, instead of continuing to heat our air when they do lose power, which apparently happens more than they think. So, you know, I've just, I just wanted to give you guys that update a year later, let you know that they still haven't changed their ways. They're not ahead of the game. They're being reactive whenever they get complaints. They're not being proactive. Actually, the DEP also told me that they have their lawyers involved with the DEP because they're arguing that they are the source of some of the odor complaints they get. So, not only are they not fixing their facility, but they're also refusing to take responsibility for the pollution that they are causing. So, I hope that in the next year, you guys can really put, you know, some thorough, more thorough effort than you were able to last year into finding an alternative solution for our waste management. Thanks.
Thank you, Jessica. Ms. Checo, I believe we do have all those updates, don't we? From Covanta.
We have the updates. We have the updates, and I will reach out and get some updated information based off of information, Jessica, that you just provided, and I'll make sure it gets out to full council. I was taking notes.
Okay. Yeah, feel free to contact me if you have any questions or.
Okay, thank you for the information, Jessica.
You're welcome. Thanks for listening.
You're welcome. No any more public comments? Okay. Mayor Aronson?
Thank you, President Leonard. So, behind the scenes, The Borough has really been working hard to make sure our businesses survive and thrive during this, this really tough time. And I wanted to make sure residents knew that, you know, we're seeing fruits of that. We had two restaurant openings, or two business openings in the past few weeks, one of which is Barcera and one of which is Conchi Candy Company. I got to visit both in the past couple of weeks, and they're just really wonderful. Ownership seems to be very positive about opening in the middle of a pandemic, and I know that's not, in any small part, because of how amazing our administration has been able to work with them, setting up pickup lanes and parking and tents and everything else that we've done the past few months. So, so I wanted to make sure I shared that with the community, so you all have that. And then the second thing is, I've been working with the new mayor in West Conshohocken. We are challenging each other to events at our local businesses every few weeks and then doing a Facebook Live. So, this past weekend, we had deli sandwiches from, from restaurant Conshohocken and one in West Conshohocken, and we plan to keep doing that over the next few weeks, you know, trying to again, highlight our businesses and make sure that they thrive and survive through the pandemic. So, so thank you to everyone at The Borough for, for being supportive of our businesses. Thank you, council, and thank you, Mayor Fournier in West Conshohocken for teaming up with me on this cool initiative.
Thank you, Mayor Aronson. Mr. Stokely?
Yes, I just want to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Bob. Ms. Barton?
The same here. Happy, healthy Thanksgiving, and yes, the candy shop is open, and they have Christmas calendars where you can pop open a door and eat a piece of candy.
Oh, there you go.
It's fun.
Okay. Ms. Flanagan?
I would just like to thank our public service crew for their stunning work at Marywood Park. Everyone needs to take a ride after dark or take a walk after dark. It really does give you that Hallmark Christmas feeling, so thanks so much for their deli work to make our town beautiful.
Thank you, Jane. Mr. Tino?
No, I don't really have anything to, to add. Jane, I did walk by the park, and it, and it really is very beautiful, and it's, it's just warming to see. So, nice work by The Borough for all personnel that helped to make that happen. And I'm not sure if this is okay to say, but if you go to the candy shop and mention St. Philip Neri, 10% of your bill is donated back to the school.
That's great. Thank you, Karen. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, I just want to thank, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and stay safe.
Thank you, Ike. Ms. Sokolowski?
Just wishing everyone a happy, healthy holiday season. It's going to be tough on a lot of us, especially our elderly friends and family who are going to be stuck inside, so please remember them. That's it. Happy, happy holidays.
Thank you, Tina. Chief Matt?
Hey, Colleen. I'd just like to remind everybody to lock your car doors. In the last few weeks, we've had a few incidents of cars being entered in the, in the east side of town. And the one thing they had in common is the doors were unlocked. In one instance, a loaded firearm was taken from the car, and in another instance, the keys to the car were in the car, and the car was stolen. None of these cars were broken into. They were all entered just by trying door handles, and it's a ongoing problem. And it's, the simple remedy is to lock your doors, and if you can get your message out to your constituents when you see them and people that are on here listening, just make sure they're locked before you go to bed, and, you know, secure your firearms and, and other valuables. Don't leave them in your car. That's all, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, George. Anyone else have anything this evening?
President Leonard, can I just remind everyone that there will be a recorded virtual Christmas tree lighting that will be presented to the community the day after Thanksgiving? And just a thank you to the mayor and to Kate Cosman for production and coordination, and I hope that the community enjoys this little production that captures the holiday spirit and reminds all of us that we're in this together and we'll finish 2020 strong.
Thank you, Stephanie. So, I also wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and please remember to wear your masks and social distance. So, with that, I will say, meeting adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Night, everyone. Thank you.